Yes. Um, okay, first things first, I have a pile of stuff in the way. You're still okay to get plugged in?
Yeah, I'll be here. If it runs out, I'll do it.
Okay. Um, well, welcome. Um, so in the case of an emergency, we're going to go that way behind a table and out either of the back doors. And there's doors at either end of hallway. Um, are there any agenda changes?
No, but we have an announcement that might jump in front of normal announcements.
Okay, good, because I wasn't sure if we could go out of order. So I'm very excited to welcome our new planning commission member, Helen Really. Thank you for joining us at such short notice, Helen. We just got the appointment notice this morning. Um, oh, no votes yet. Oh, oh, yes, okay, so Helen is officially joining us, um, May 6th. Um, but we're very excited, is that right?
I think that's right.
Um, but we're very excited to have her joining in as a non-voting member for the next two meetings. I think is the official way of doing it. So you are welcome to participate in all the conversations and feedback, and we welcome your opinion. And we're very excited.
Well, thank you, I'm thrilled.
Good, I don't know if we've ever had a new appointee with so much background knowledge about the city. It's quite exciting.
Good, welcome, our council representative.
Yes, in the audience, we have our council chair, our official liaison. Yes, wonderful. Um, and so we are all here tonight, Duncan is joining us remotely. Um, so we have a full slate for the first time in a while. Wonderful. Um, was that the announcement that you meant, Paul? Okay, good, perfect. Um, Helen, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, just that I'm, I'm very happy to be part of this. I get, I, I was appointed to the rest of Lori's term, so you'll have me for two years. Unless I die or something.
Well, that's.
Oh, well, I'm getting old, you know? Um, but I, I'm really, um, I'm really looking forward to this, um, exercise and effort. And it'll be nice to sort of be able to focus a little more on just fewer things and more depth.
That's what we like to strive for here, but it sometimes feels like a lot of depth and a lot of things, so.
Thank you.
Wonderful, okay, so, um, we have open to the, open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? Ryan, come up.
There we go, Ryan Doyle. Uh, how many of you are familiar with Strong Towns, the organization? Yeah, Paul's like, yeah. So, um, Chuck Marone is, uh, a really big person in planning right now. Uh, he wrote Confessions of a Recovering Engineer. Um, he coined the word strode. He also, uh, talks about the suburban Ponzi scheme. Louder?
Yes, please.
Okay, Michael, uh, the suburban Ponzi scheme, right? And I, I think, uh, we kind of beat around the edges with this, but when we build far away from agglomeration centers, then the cost to deliver services increases in so many ways, uh, both in terms of the actual construction and then the maintenance. And the secondary effect is because it's all automobile centric, we now have to accommodate the space for automobiles, which then thins out the agglomeration centers because you have fewer buildings and more parking spaces. It's good that we got away with, did away with parking minimums a few years ago. Right, parking minimums? Yeah, um, and I know that's on the agenda tonight, so I won't get into that. Um, but the type of built environment that does not shelter people or provide for space that's productive is really inefficient from a tax revenue point of view. And so the reason why some small cities can fund more things than we can in South Burlington is because they're not carrying the weight of really spread out development like we have here. Um, and so I really want to echo what Michael was saying at the last meeting about, you know, if somebody can develop 25% of their land and they have four acres, they could, you know, put a whole acre of structure down. And we do have exemptions for some structures that are at grade. So if somebody wants to make a whole big terrace or several tennis courts, uh, or things like that, then it can really add up quickly. Um, so the other thing to keep in mind is that even old neighborhoods have a really high tax value, even if the, uh, the buildings themselves are very old and decrepit. Um, and so in some of what you're looking at here is figuring out how we can have the density that service delivery really works out, because the current trajectory for the city in terms of even maintaining what's already been built isn't a good outlook going into the future. Right, like, how much do we need the state's help just to pave Dorset Street? Right, um, and we have so much more road, so many more trails, sidewalk, and a need for much more sidewalk and trail. So, um, this is really important work that you're doing and really look forward to seeing that discussion go forward. And taking it a step further from what Michael said last week, when we're talking about lot coverage, I don't think it's overly progressive to say that it wouldn't even be bad to have two classes of lot coverage where one has a curve on it. In other words, impervious surface and built structures that support habitation um, might have a one-to-one ratio, but impervious surfaces that support automobiles might be weighted at 1.5 or something like that. So when you're talking about lot coverage, you're promoting habitation coverage and discouraging excess pavement, excess garage. Because there is an efficiency to even people parking on the street instead of making long driveways as some of the displays we saw last week where it runs all the way beside the house and into the back and takes up coverage that way instead of supporting dense habitation of people. So I just want to put that out there for you to consider. I know that's not the norm around here, but I also don't think it's that vanguard, uh, in particular to be off the table. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ryan. Anything else, um, under this item? Okay, then we can go on to announcements. I think we covered the biggest, most exciting one already with Helen. Any other announcements?
Yes, fantastic, total eclipse.
Oh, that was, that.
Spectacular.
Yes.
Fortunately for us, we could sit in front of our house right there.
And I saw a statistic that there have been three sunny April eights in the last 75 years in, in this part of Vermont, so we lucked out.
Statistically, my, I invited my parents to come visit to see it, and they were like, it's gonna be cloudy. If I wanted to see it, I'll go to Texas.
One of our guests was a, was a, an eclipse chaser. Goes all over the world. He's already been to four.
Wow.
Next one is in Spain, and the one after that is in Australia.
Wowee.
He's retired.
Any, any other announcements? Or staff report?
Yep, a few things I just wanted to update you on. One is, um, the city council has been receiving, um, presentations by, uh, sort of department and topic area over, um, since, uh, March with, um, three new members. So they've had a night focused on public safety, they've had a night focused on public works. Um, May 20th is our scheduled night to give a community development and planning and zoning night. Um, so we're going to give an introduction to all the things that you all do, the development review board does, and our department does. So just a, uh, little heads up on that. Related, that same night, um, we're going to be, uh, having, uh, follow-up conversation with council about the water service area and the sewer service area and the way that we're going to talk about it with council. And, um, we're in the midst of preparing a, uh, web map that will be available to them and to you and to the public will be to show, uh, in a geographic sense, um, how and where the water, the proposed water service area, the proposed sewer service area, your zoning districts, your overlay zoning districts, like the habitat blocks and the river corridors, um, the city comprehensive plan, future land use map, and other information led, how, how they fit together um, to enable the council and, and you all as you, uh, go through the zoning to, uh, make sure it's aligned in the way that you want it to be aligned. So, um, there'll be a presentation and discussion from ourselves and Public Works at that night. Um, and the web map will be available in advance, um, for everybody's use.
Did you say that's on the 20th?
That's on the 20th, yeah.
Thank you. Great.
Um, let's see, last week, uh, I was, uh, had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of the Tesla dealership slash repair location. Um, if you recall, last year, there was a zoning change that enabled, um, that, among other things, take place along Shelburne Road. And, uh, it was neat to see that taking place. And, uh, you know, that's a small piece of the climate action plan to improve the, uh, ability to get more EV, new EVs and EVs on the road, uh, that are, um, able to be serviced in the area. So that was pretty neat. And I think that that is my list for today. Those are the big ones. Uh, yes, do you want to speak to that?
The Affordable Housing Committee is hosting an ADU forum, um, tomorrow evening. Accessory dwelling unit, the, did I say AHC too?
Yeah.
The Affordable Housing Committee is hosting an accessory dwelling unit forum, um, tomorrow night. Um, my understanding is there, there are people on the panel who can speak to the financing and construction of ADUs. Um, Marla from our office can talk to the, about the permitting and the rules applying to ADUs. Um, and there, I believe there's also someone from AARP, um, involved in that as well. So that will be in the library, I believe. Okay, I will clarify that. Um, but it is co-hosted by the library, and so we are happy, we're excited to have that happen and as part of the Affordable Housing Committee's public education, um, push around some of the housing issues in South Burlington. Um, follow-up, they also have a book discussion scheduled for April 30th, so that is also coming up.
Right, um, Michael.
I wanted to follow up on what Paul said about Tesla's opening. Um, one of the managers thanked the city and particularly the planning commission for making it possible for them to open there. So whoever was on the commission at the time, uh, they send their thanks and appreciation.
Anything else under announcements? Okay, um, so we can get started with item five, the land development regulation updates related to, S-100 Act 47, and this includes a lot of different things. So, um, does it make sense to kind of go in order of the packet with some of the questions? So we can kind of.
Yeah, so.
One of those red items.
Right, so just to frame this a little bit, this packet has, um, is intentionally too much for one meeting. Um, we also have a meeting on next, uh, next Tuesday, so less than a week from now. So it's intended to be kind of a two-meeting packet, um, from staff perspective, and I think kind of logic perspective. Um, it would be great for the commission to go through the red questions that we have. Much of the rest is explanatory or background, um, or highlights where we are making changes that the commission has already discussed at least to some, um, level. So getting to those red points would be, would be very helpful throughout, um, until about page five and a half. Um, and then you get into the Article 15 stuff, which is kind of its own beast and is a bit more complicated. So, um, getting through the rest of the red questions and leaving the Article 15 stuff for next week is from, from our perspective, probably the, the most logical. Um, the other thing is, I would just say, um, grammar, typos, wording, things like that. Um, we know the formatting is, or I know the formatting is crazy and the numbering is all wrong because it's been cut and pasted from all over the place, that will all be corrected. Um, same with typos and other things, and we'll have, you'll have another cut at the language for that kind of stuff. So it'd be great to focus on, um, substance and policy during these discussions and then get to some of those further detail edits kind of in the next wave, the next iteration of, of these drafts. Um, the last thing is that we may be missing something that the, that a commissioner or commissioners wants to discuss further. What we discussed today in the office is, is maybe the best plan, and, and this would be up to Jessica and, and the rest of the commission, would be for commissioners to email us in writing those additional topics, something that's different than what's being discussed, um, in advance. I think probably by early, by, by maybe May 1st would be good, and I can let the commission know what that date would be, um, to make sure that it's on that next agenda, because it, it just won't be able to get into a packet, um, for next week's meeting. And our first meeting in May is, I believe, the 14th. So just kind of staying on the topics that are here and then raising any additional topics to, that we can then provide more information or do more background research or whatever we need to do for that next, um, meeting in May.
Okay, I mean, I feel like that recommendation makes a lot of sense, like the things kind of in red and in the packet are things that we have prepared to talk about and were kind of pointed out, so, um, you know, I think it's, and there's more than we can probably get through here, so it probably makes sense to continue with the packet in order, address the red questions, and then it sounds like a good, yep. Okay, so, um, I guess the first one is about the housing in neighborhoods. Um, and it looks like the first question is really about the three and fourplex buildings on a lot um, having the same exemptions as the one and two unit buildings.
So specifically, this is a process question, um, or largely it's a process question. So, uh, you've talked about how you, um, would allow, you're, you're grouping by building type, right? So there's single and two-family homes that would be allowed on a certain lot size, and then three and four-family homes would be allowed in these lower, um, intensity districts, uh, at a slightly larger lot size. Under the state law, um, anything that is a single or two-family home is exempt from site plan review, and so it doesn't go through all of the, you know, where's your dumpster and all that kind of thing. It's just a administrative approval by the zoning administrator through a, you know, submit your zoning permit. Uh, anything beyond that is up to the municipality to choose. And so, um, I think it was brought up by one of the commissioners or a member of the public at, at a recent meeting that if you're going to allow three and four plexes into neighborhoods on a regular basis, just like other buildings, a way to simplify that would be to make them subject to, uh, exempt from site plan review. So they'd be treated just like single and two-family homes from a process perspective.
Yeah, and just the other thing to note that this, if division of land was involved, it would not exempt those buildings from subdivision review. This is just if you have an existing lot and you want to build a thing on it, you wouldn't need to go through site plan review. But if you needed to go through subdivision for dividing land, you would still have to do that.
Um, Donna, yeah.
One thing I was thinking of. That, you know, it helps me to understand a little bit better is if we individually speak to, how does this affect, um, new construction versus how does it affect, how, how does it affect, um, an existing, um, perhaps an existing building on a site or an existing neighborhood? So, you know, because I, I actually tried to start like an, an article, you know, and look at the new LDRs and how do they affect new construction neighborhoods versus existing neighborhoods? Because I think that's probably a big question that people are going to have. And so it would be really interesting if we could, you know, every time we propose something, it's like talk about it in terms of existing neighborhood effect versus, you know, new construction effect. And I understand this one is for an existing lot. But what if it was, what if it was an existing, you know, house on a fairly large lot? And, you know, how would, how would those two things, um, be treated?
Yeah, so in the simplest, in the simplest thing, um, you're right that it, generally a new neighborhood or a new multiple building, um, multiple home, um, development project would require subdivision. So it would still have those subdivision rules, but if you're not subdividing land and even an exist, a lot that's not empty, that has an existing something on it, would trigger site plan. Um, I don't remember exactly what the thresholds are, um, but if you do a certain amount of modification to the, um, existing site, so, you know, you, you, you know, change a window out for another type of window, then you wouldn't. But then, but if you're adding square footage, if you're renovating a certain amount, then, you know, you end up triggering site plan.
So, I'm sorry, are, are you speaking about multifamilies or, or generally?
Multifamilies.
Okay.
Or not, not, not single and two-family homes.
Right.
Yeah.
So to your question specifically, Donna, if somebody was building a brand-new fourplex or converting an existing single-family home into a fourplex, it's the same process. It would be a site plan today either way. Does that make sense?
Yes, and so the question is, do we want to eliminate the need for?
A site plan.
A site plan review for three and four.
Right, and that would, that would then apply either whether it's a brand-new one or a conversion of an existing, um, say, single-family home into a fourplex.
Well, that's just site plan review.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So what are all the, just go through just quickly, what are the, what are the points of review? Site plan is the first one.
So they would, they would still have zoning permit and building permit the way that.
Yeah.
Whether it's new or if it's a conversion.
Okay.
There would be no difference in process.
Well, th- there's a difference in process in that there's no site plan.
Currently, a brand-new fourplex or a conversion to a fourplex would both go through all of those things.
Right.
So we're talking about eliminating site plan for, for both of those, a new thing or a conversion.
And so the resulting process, if it were eliminated, would be that it would be a one-stop process instead of a two-stop. So instead of first doing a site plan, which has to show an aerial image, um, of, of the entire property with all the sort of landscaping shown, every sort of bit and piece, it would be a first-step review, which then after approval would then come in for a zoning permit to enact it. It would jump straight to the second step, so it would just be a zoning permit, which would look to make sure that all the rules have been met from a, uh, lot coverage, height of building, any architectural requirements. Um, what it would be less of is it would be typically a little bit less rigorous requirement for what that aerial image has to show, because a site plan typically has a higher level of, an engineer has to do it and things like that. Uh, typically for a brand-new house, they're, we're getting that anyway because the architects are designing all that. Um, but it would be a little bit less of a high bar as to what has to be submitted. And then anything more, anything other than a single-family owner-occupied home would also go to the fire department for its own, um, electrical and life safety code review, regardless of what you choose to do with site.
What if, um, what if someone is, is doing this and has limited professional assistance? And they want a site plan review, just an informal site plan review, just to say, is this allowed?
Sure, I mean.
And is, is that, is that something that you do?
Is to help people to get through their process. So we, um, meet with people of all different skill, skill levels to make sure that they have met the rules and that they understand what they're doing. And sometimes there's folks who come in and day one, they've got everything all set, and some people come back and, come back and have different ideas and share different ideas for months with us, and we're happy to do both. But that's really more of a professional services, because the regulations are just meet or don't meet. What we're, what we're able to provide, um, through our development review team is the help for folks of all different skill levels.
Yeah, so the, so the benefit to not having to do a site plan review for three and fourplex is that someone doesn't necessarily have to hire an engineer to do it.
It's less step in process, there's less cost, and it, um, it gets out of having to deal, you know, the site plan is really designed for larger projects. And so you will, the, the administrative officer or DRB will, will have some sort of awkward fits of, you know, tell us how you're taking care of your trash, well, we're putting it in a tote. You know, it's designed to really be for larger projects. It's rare that we don't get a lot of three or fourplexes. And, um, one data point that I think has been pretty successful is that when South Village was originally approved, um, the DRB made a finding that any triplexes would be exempt from site plan review. And all went well with it. So that's why, one of the reasons we think it's a straightforward and, and, uh, simple solution.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you have something, Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So you, you might have said this already, but I, let's say I have a single-family home on my parcel, and I convert it to a fourplex, maybe on the same footprint, but certainly within the lot coverage restrictions. Uh, does that require site plan?
Today, yes.
Tomorrow?
That's up to you.
Okay.
Our recommendation is no, but that is your affirmative choice, because the state law says single and two-family homes are exempt, everything else is up to the municipality.
And the second part of that, I thought you said depends how much you do. So where's, where's the line?
So that, um, I misspoke a little bit. That is more applicable to existing projects, like you say you already have a, a fourplex and you're, um, changing the roof line and you're adding an addition on the side and you're doing something. You wouldn't be changing the type from like one unit to four units, you're keeping four units, but you still may trigger site plan if you do a certain amount of change to the site.
Right, so if you physically move the building.
That certain amount is a movable target that's in the discretion of the.
No, there's.
No, so if you physically move, let's say your building is, is currently a thousand square feet and you add 100 square feet, you are changing the site plan. If you change the aerial image of it, where it gets a little bit squishy is what if you want to move a tree around? Um, typically for large commercial projects, they've got a, a site plan includes where all the trees are with, you know, a threeplex that might get a little bit more difficult to, for, for, um, the owners to, to fully internalize, and that, that's where that could become a little bit tricky. Some examples that Kelsey was talking about is if you added a dormer, uh, into the roof line, that may not change the site plan, so that might be a, a zoning permit, um, assuming it doesn't go over a certain value. So it is a, generally speaking, a, a bright line between the two. There are a few areas where it gets a little bit gray, because it's hard to write every circumstance, yeah.
I would support moving, extending the exemption to three and fourplex.
I, I have one more question, how, how would parking be different? Would there still be, or is there currently a requirement for parking? And then would there continue to be, would that just be part of the administrative review?
So today, um, a single-family home or a two-family home does not have a parking minimum, but multifamily has, uh, I guess under S-100, it's one space per unit is required. So, uh, that would be dealt with through the zoning permit rather than the site plan, but it, it's would be the minimum unless you eliminate that minimum. That's the only minimum we still have in parking is for multifamily housing.
Okay, um, do, um, I don't think we need a motion just because it, we're just having.
If you want to do a straw poll so that we have it and move on, that would be really helpful.
Um, Paul, did you have something on this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, we've been rolling along, um, uh, it seems to me trying to find ways to add additional housing to existing neighborhoods, primarily, um, single-family home neighborhoods. And I don't know how much we've considered the impact on those neighborhoods of having this kind of development in those neighborhoods. And, um, I would like to have us consider that as we consider all of this. Um, you know, a fourplex in a neighborhood that's 95% single-family homes is probably going to change, uh, the nature and character of the neighborhood and, uh, may affect property values. And, uh, I'd just like to have us start looking at that more as we go about making these changes. It seems we, our impetus has been, you know, let's build three plexes and four plexes and build as much as we can. And I, I don't know that the existing older neighborhoods are going to really. the existing older neighborhoods are going to really want that to happen.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Um, you just said context.
Well.
Actually, Helen has her hand up.
Yeah, I, I, somewhere in all the reading, and I only read through it once, but I thought there was a portion that is redlined out, that asks for an evaluation of some of the housing changes. Would, and, and so to your point, Paul, if, if that section, I can't remember which section it is, um, would reference this, and we're eliminating any kind of evaluation, then I guess we won't know the impact till after the fact, or I guess you don't know the impact until after the fact, but you won't have any um, data that might help you say, oh, maybe we got that a little wrong, and we should do something different in other neighborhoods. So, you know what I'm referring to?
I think so, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the, um, well, actually, we didn't give them that language. I was just thinking of language that was in fifteen, and I didn't.
It's in, it's in the inclusionary zoning.
Oh, it's an inclusionary zoning, that's right, okay, so that doesn't relate to this. Is that right?
Um.
Or not?
It's.
It can, it doesn't always, because inclusionary zoning is only triggered at ten units.
Right.
So.
Not applied to a.
It would not apply to one, three or fourplex building on an existing lot.
So at this point, we don't have a um, intention to really look at the impact some of these changes might have, both positively and, and whatever it is. Is that right?
Well.
We, we do have some context sensitivity requirements, um, which may may answer this concern that Paul has raised. Um, you know, what, new development has to be context-sensitive to the area in which it's taking place.
So just to make sure we're all sort of structurally looking, looking at it the same way, that, a lot of that requirement is in subdivision and PUD at the moment.
Yeah.
So a single three or fourplex on a existing lot wouldn't have that, um, the same way that a single-family home or a duplex also wouldn't.
And the other thing is, I think we mentioned it before, that this would have, happened slowly over a long time, that a neighborhood's nature would change if a lot of this kind of development happened. But it's uh, I think it will become an imperative for the efficient use of land and the availability of stock, housing stock.
Um, Fran, you've got, and then Donna?
Yeah, so i- i- if you changed it to just site plan review, and it goes from a single-family to a fourplex, in part of that review, do the adjoining neighbors get notified of the zoning requests so that they could voice their opinion?
Uh, hang on, I just need to think about it for a second. So um, if for zoning permits, uh, the following issuance of the permit, the uh, property owner must post for fifteen days on the property that wha- what's been issued, and that is the appeal notice. Um, for site plans, there's two kinds of site plans. There's administrative site plans, and there's development review board site plans. Administrative site plans, which I believe typically three and fourplexes would fall under, especially conversions, um, follow that same um, notice requirement, so after it's issued, it must be posted for appeal. Ones that go to the development review board, which are larger ones, abutting neighbors are notified in advance of the public hearing.
Donna, I guess, and then Paul?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I think this question is, you know, like how, how are existing neighborhoods coping with higher density, and you know, you see this a lot. I was, I was actually riding around Williston today in that area around Stagecoach Road, and, and, you know, and it's largely pretty good-sized lots, large houses, you know, colonial standard kind of houses and stuff. But the newer development, right adjacent and right, you know, pretty much right the same neighborhood, has much smaller lots, much higher density. And so the adjacent neighborhoods, you know, it's like, I don't know if people are complaining about the higher density adjacent. The question is, if you were to take one of those houses, and you propose a couple of different ways of converting it, you know, converting a half-acre lot basically into four units, I think it's probably going to come down to two things. One is the parking. You know, that's what people always complain about, you know, it's like, is, is there going to be people parking on street, because in neighborhood like that, they're not going to like that. But the second is, does it fit in architecturally? Um, you know, and I think if both of those are not objectionable, and you have, you know, and you have a reasonably good-sized lot, um, I think it, it boils down to, how, how good of a design do you have? You know, is it, is it objectionable can be based a lot more on people's aesthetic judgments about it, as well as the parking. And uh, you know, I don't, I don't think universally somebody would condemn putting in a three-unit in, in, in a place where there's a single-family unit. But it has to be, you know, it's like, I'm sure that somebody could really botch it and do a bad job of it, and it would be universally reviled. So it comes down to, like, are you, you know, it's like, you're not doing any design review, so do you universally let somebody do something when you, you could have a good, you could have it done well, or you could have it done poorly? A site plan isn't going to change that at all. You're not going to know any of that on the site plan, so I would say you should exempt the site plan, but at some point, somebody has to make some judgments about exactly does, how well does this fit in? And who, who, is, is that, is that the planning? Office Planning and Zoning is going to determine, oh, this is, this is well-done, or this is really going to be objectionable. Who decides that?
Um, Paul, did you want to respond to that, or?
Um, I wanted to give a, a, just a foundational statement. Um, I just want to make sure that we're, we're all making sure that we're talking around the same thing, which is uh, uh, under um, Act forty-seven, S-100, um, any district served by water and sewer that allows for residential housing, multifamily units with four or fewer units must be a permitted use. So it's not a question of whether, that's already been established by state law that they must be allowed.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really the process question. I know that that was your question, Donna, but I just want to make sure as a larger discussion, that's been decided.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, I know, Paul, you had your hand up, but you were trying to say something related. You on the same topic.
Michael, go ahead. I'll go off.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, probably all of this, and, and, you know, from what Paul said is on an aside, but uh, I mean, we can all remember when it was a thoughtful, logical uh, sound mitigation strategy to destroy two hundred homes in the uh, you know, in the neighborhood, you know, so I guess that's what I'm thinking, you know, I mean, as land becomes scarcer, do land become scarcer, uh, all land will become more attractive, um. And uh, you know, there'd be pressure on people to sell, just like there was pressure on people at the airport to sell. And um, you know, I just, I mean, I've thought this many times as we've been having this discussion, you know, that here comes the bulldozers to my neighborhood, you know, so.
I get that.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Uh, we're only talking about making the regulations less onerous here. We aren't talking about where it might apply, but Paul has just pointed out that uh, we have to allow it if it has water and sewer. Um, the where, can we define where or possibly add uh, con- context-sensitive requirements uh, that would preclude somebody from uh, doing a fourplex in an area that only has single-family lots?
Um, the simple answer is no.
No, I thought so. How about context?
Um.
I know, we can't do it the way we do it in a PUD.
Right.
So, Michael, i- if there are black and white standards, yes. So it cannot be, um, it, it likely cannot be a conditional use, for example, it has to be a permitted use. But um, for example, um, you already have a standard in your, in the regulations in the R-four district that could apply in the, in all of the replacement of it, that says that a uh, a new building cannot be more than one story taller than the buildings on properties adjacent to it. So that is conste- that, that's a way to be context-sensitive, but it's also black and white, so it's not a um, so, so that, that's a tool that exists in there, and obviously, you can't go over the maximum height in the district, period. But that's a way to be context-sensitive, that if it's a neighborhood of all one stories, that you can't be for, even if the regulation's otherwise allowed.
Well, there's that, there's the, the building coverage limits, the setbacks, there's all these other things that otherwise constrain building bulk, um, number of stories and everything else is all constrained elsewhere. It's more, um, the way I'm, the way I'm thinking about some of this is if you can do a single-family or two-family home, that's a certain size, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to not allow that's a similar size, maybe, maybe slightly larger if the building coverage is higher or whatever. Whatever numbers you decide on, if it's a bu- a building in the same ballpark as a, a large single-family home, from a city perspective of being a three or fourplex doesn't make a lot of difference. I mean, yes, additional cars, yes, additional people, but from an aesthetic fitting into the neighborhood perspective, um, some of those other building volume um, numbers are regulated elsewhere.
So we do kill with two birds with one stone.
Yeah.
Making the regulations less onerous and aligning with S-100 and H-47.
Yes.
Do you, um, well, I guess Duncan, please speak up or wave or unmute if you want to say anything. I want to make sure we're not missing you here. Good. Um, you know, Paul, I completely, I agree with your, your thinking, and I wonder if, um, but I, but the point that was just made, I guess I also agree with, if, if I'm going to have like a building, a new building next to where I live, um, and it's a certain size, and it's a certain distance away from my home, do I care if it's four units or just happens to have a lot of people in it? I mean, I don't know, I'm just thinking like, there's, there's houses. I'm just thinking about like, when I moved into my house, the five of us, and we all had a car, so it was like, five people and five cars and two dogs, and we've slowly kicked our roommates out, and only have one dog, but so we have a little less cars now, but like, how is this kind of ebb and flow? Like, I'm thinking of like my situation, my neighborhood, but like, would it be? I don't know, I, I almost wonder if we need to just make sure we're okay with the setbacks and the heights and the set building coverage, knowing that it might be one unit, or it might be three or four units, like, maybe that's what we need to just make sure we're comfortable with, like, it's like, maybe we don't have a choice about.
Well, I mean, the experience, I mean, my neighborhood seems to be a really good example to, to use, because when it was originally built, um, there were fourplexes, uh, and there were single-family homes. And the design of them was very compatible. Um, then another developer bought portion of the lot, and they started using a, a very different-looking townhouse design that was much more basic and was one that you'd seen everywhere. And it didn't fit the original, it didn't fit in so well with the original houses. And it was, you know, it was kind of painful for people who had bought really nice-looking houses to all of a sudden have very boring-looking houses built right next door. So that goes back to the design issue, you know, it's like, you can't tell somebody not to build a boring-looking box next to you, can you? You know, I think there are places, certainly places I've lived, that there were design reviews, and they, and you, if, if, you know, we know it's, it's, it's hard sometimes to find people who are fair uh, and somewhat impartial in doing that kind of design review. But I think if I lived in a neighborhood and somebody was going to put in a fourplex um, right next to me, I would appreciate having a design review to say, this is appropriate, or you know, you're going to have to go back to the drawing board on this one, this doesn't really fit.
And I know that's a little different than what we're talking about. I mean, is that even an option? I mean, I don't know that we have design review for.
There are, there are residential design standards in Article thirteen, um, towards the end there, uh, that are, that set some basic um, components beyond just the height and bulk. I would not describe them as architectural standards, um, but they are basic standards like garage doors need to be set back a certain distance, there needs to be a certain amount of windows, um, uh, front doors have to face the, towards the front, things like that. Um, but it's, I would not, and, and garages can only take up a certain proportion of the, of the front width, but that's about it. Um, we don't have architectural design standards um, other than to a limited extent in the Form-based code. So I'm happy to have you review those, um, we can flag that for your, um, one of the upcoming meetings if you'd like to.
Okay, um, okay, well, we, we've talked about this for a while. Are we ready for a straw poll? Um, okay, so those in favor of, um.
One, one more thing. If we have to allow it under S-100 and H-47, anyway, for all this, then why wouldn't we exempt it?
Um, so it's, there's a, we, you have to allow it as unallowable use. You can still decide to require site plan review as a process. So you could, you could leave it the way it is, where, well, you could leave it where you're allowed to have a three or fourplex because of state law, but you do need to have site plan, where you currently don't for single and two-family homes. You could choose to um, not require site plan, but you still need to allow the use. So it's just the difference of, does the person building a three or four-unit building on an existing lot with no subdivision have to go through that, that process of site plan review?
I mean, we don't have to exempt it, so, just because we're doing it.
You don't have to exempt it from the process of site plan review. You do have to allow it as an allowable use.
As a permitted use.
A permitted use.
Yeah.
Be clear.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not saying um, that you should require site plan review. I agree that you should exempt it from site plan review. My issue is something quite different.
Okay, design, yeah.
Saying don't allow.
Yeah, okay.
I'm fully supporting. Because I just think that people can take, you know, take the intent of something and.
Donna, your mic is not on.
And can take the intent of, of a regulation and abuse it. And put in something that, you know, could really cause a lot of trouble for neighbors.
Okay, so um, those in favor of exempting the sing- the three and fourplex on an existing lot, raise your hand.
This is straw thing, right?
Straw poll, just straw poll.
With straw?
Yes, um, okay, so we're, we have, um, so we all voted for um, putting that in the draft for looping it on. So we have a lot more information here about housing, and then the next item in red is about um, neighborhood-scale commercial uses in the low-scale neighborhood and medium-scale hood districts.
Yeah, so a lot of um, what we wanted to discuss about this is in the packet. Um, we just wanted to highlight it in red, because this is not, it's something that has been raised before, as, and it was raised certainly in the um, city plan discussion about what the low-scale residential um, future land use type um, and was intended to look like, and in the city plan, there was um, additional narrative and, and actions and goals about allowing um, neighborhood scale and neighborhood um, serving commercial uses. So this is putting in, um, working in some of that, uh, conceptually into, into the LDRs, is that where the commission would like to go, and exactly how um, to put guardrails on what kind of commercial use would or would not be allowed? Um, as noted in the memo, there's a current, um, there's a, a use called a limited neighborhood commercial use that's described in, in fourteen eleven N. Um, and then a few of those things that are listed are, are things lifted from that existing piece of the L D Rs, but they're also tweaked a little bit. To, uh, make sense in some of these more generally in low scale residential neighborhoods. So again, just for con, making sure everybody's on the same page, this is, um, the concept, we, we can consider the consolidated district um, one or, you know, low scale neighborhood, L S N. Uh, anything that is currently R four or below would be included, um, in, in this. You could also have the same thing as a use included in the next category up in the two, um, which would be currently the R, R seven, R twelve, that kind of area. But this would be kind of a, a use that you would then allow in different districts.
Didn't, didn't we do this for South Village at the corner of Allen Road and Spear? These are the uses that we allowed?
Yes, and Paul just stepped out of the room, but I believe he tweaked it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, I actually feel like that was a nice trial run. We had a lot of discussion at the time. We kept it narrowly applied at the time because it was a new concept.
Right.
So currently I know it says like certain, it's only applicable in certain master planned projects. Like at the time, that was a way to just make sure we weren't going too big, too quick.
Exactly.
So what you're saying is instead of it being narrowly applied to just those certain master plan projects, it would be for the whole district.
Right, and it's.
Additional.
It's kind of, what it really is, is putting a, a scale of a commercial use into its own use type. So like you could call it like something could be a restaurant, but if it's of a certain size and scale, it could be allowed in these districts where maybe you don't allow just general restaurant. Like you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily allow so, like a, a, a large, I don't know what, Applebee's or something? I don't know. Um, but you would, you could allow a deli or something similar.
Coffee bar.
Yeah, so it's, it's sort of pulling in scale, it's pulling, um, a few performance standards, things in that you could make different, um, in those things for lighting and parking and, and whatever else. And then pulling in sort of the smaller scale of a handful of uses that would are, we, that we considered to be neighborhood serving. So we listed restaurant, retail, personal instruction, childcare and artist production studio. That may not be everything that you want to include. But it's, it's more taking the, the smallest version of, of things that would be serving a neighborhood instead of saying, oh, you have to, if you, if you want a corner store, you have to allow a grocery store. It's pulling that in.
For, for those who might want to visualize it, there's one at the corner of Tilly Drive and Heinsberg Road. Cause the one at South Village hasn't been built, so, but that one is a.
Yeah, the Red Barn.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The other intention is if, if you have spent any time in, in Burlington, um, some of the small stores like Momos Market or the Henry Street Deli, things like that are, are that sort of scale. They're approximately this scale. We also have put in here that you could have it on just corners with arterial and collector streets instead of, you know, mid block or only on, um, sort of neighborhood scale streets, like putting it where there's more traffic, um, already. There are other ways to sort of regulate location as well as size.
Yeah, um, Helen?
Does this, um, I, I unders, I clearly can understand how you could, um, include this in a new development. So, you know, they want to put in a hundred and something units and they'll have some commercial. What this might allow, and I'm trying to think how it would, um, play out. I mean, you used the Henry Street or whatever it is, deli, that's was in a house. I mean, it used to be a home. There might even be an apartment up above. I don't know.
Yep.
So is that what we could imagine? So that in, um, I don't know, Laurel Hill, that neighborhood. If there were a home that someone wanted to convert to, um, some, one of these uses, that, that's, this would allow that. So that's what we're.
Mostly, yes, um, aiming at, yes, I think that we would have to do a little more tweaking in kind of multiple uses in a structure. And like, there's a few other technical pieces that we would have to regu, change regulations on to allow like an apartment above a commercial space. Um, but generally, yes, I just came, I just remembered another, um, South Burlington scale thing is actually Aviation Deli um, over by the airport. That sort of scale potentially two floors, but that footprint's about right. Um, we wouldn't necessarily have the back parking lot that's there, but, um, there used to be homes all the way around, around that.
Don't we know?
So I'm just, as, as an, as something that existed and actually pre-existed some of our zoning regulations that prevented commercial uses. That's a South Burlington example, not to always look, not to always look at Burlington.
If in that example, you converted the entire building to a commercial, would you have to pay into the, uh, housing trust fund? If you've taken a residential building out?
Probably yes. I would have to double check that regulation. I haven't looked at it recently.
But it, you know, it's a good point about only on the corners or not.
Yeah.
Um, that was one of your kind of other questions and I, I think that's a good question. I mean, we, we already allow kind of like a home business.
Yes.
So some of that's already happening and allowed as it should be.
Right, like you could have someone who does tax preparation, doing it out of a converted, their converted garage or, or their basement or a home office.
Like, what do you think about like one of, like a small deli or a yoga studio, like just right in the middle of a neighborhood, yoga studio or?
It already exists.
That's up to all of you.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's okay. Like my neighborhood has a, um, a home daycare. You know, they, they only have a certain number of kids that they're allowed to have.
Yeah, there's a different licensing thing for this home based.
But it's, um, it's nice to see the kids walking around the neighborhood. You know, they're small enough to.
Yeah, there's actually a preschool daycare on Patchen, um, on the west side of Patchen Road. That's, that's.
All right, the schoolhouse.
No, it's not the school.
The children's.
Something like that. It's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, at the corner of a neighborhood, um, but on the arterial.
So that would be on a corner.
That would be on a corner, but something in that scale, like, I guess that's a question. Would you want someone to convert a home that's in the middle? Or, or does that matter?
If it's a new building, I think having it at, at an intersection is, is good planning. If you're converting something that's existing, I think we have to allow it.
Well, we don't have to allow it. That's the discussion we're having. So.
But we, but we've done it.
You agree with.
There's a lot of precedent.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's, yeah, uh, whoops. Duncan, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, actually I do. Um, I'm just thinking of some of the allowed uses and I can't remember. I do remember the conversation we had around South Village and I can't remember. I mean, restaurant and retail are pretty broad uses. Did we dial down at all and limit some of that? Or is it just any retail, any restaurant? I'm, I'm thinking, you know, did, did my own personal bias, but like somebody wanted to put a gun store in the corner of my neighborhood. I'm not sure that that would be really loved by a lot of folks, but you know, I, I don't know. Did we? Are there limited retail uses or any retail? I can't remember.
It depends. Um, there are certain things that you can't regulate differently. Um, so for example, you can't, there are certain state level restrictions on how you can regulate, regulate cannabis differently than other similar building or, uh, other similar um, commercial establishments. A, a gun shop, I'm not sure. I haven't looked into that exact, um, situation, but you could be more specific in the retail if you wanted to. These are all options that are open. I think you could be, you could define this use as a, as a more specific type of retail. Um, I don't know, I, off the top of my head, I don't know how you would word that, but you could sort of, you could, we could work on some, some language to pull in just from general retail and general restaurant into something a little bit more specific. If the commission was interested.
I think that would be a good idea.
Do you want to define restaurant more tightly?
Well, Duncan's example was in the retail question about certain, certain kinds of retail and versus other kinds of retail. Like he was saying, if you, um, would this allow a gun shop to go in on the, in this kind of retail use, because it is retail, um, I would have to look into it and I, I'd look into if and how you could pull in the definition of retail, um, but this, he mentioned restaurant as the other, as the other option. So you, you could, um, we did mention restaurant and not bar, so that are, that already pulls it in a little bit. But you can also, you could, if you wanted to restrict hours of operation or some other things, um, it starts to get into trickier territory with what you're legally allowed to do, um, in how you define a use.
How about a hair salon?
I think a hair salon would be fine.
Easy one, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we, I know there's some that are.
Yep.
Mid block.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think our city plan, um, talked about, I, I'm just wondering if, if language could, um, help define these kinds of businesses as ones that really enhance the, um, commu, sense of community in a, um, neighborhood. Cause I think that's what the city plan was aiming at, that we don't want everyone to have to get into a car to go and do everything they need. You know, so my preference would be, you know, potentially a bar or a gun shop doesn't necessarily lend itself potentially to the community sense.
Yeah.
A small deli or a yoga studio or childcare or, I don't know. Ice cream shop, I don't know.
Well, and people have been.
In a hair salon.
I mean, it seems like even a fairly new concept in restaurants is, you know, people inviting people into their homes and preparing meals for a group of people in their home.
Sure.
And in other countries, it happens a lot. In Italy, you can go anywhere in Italy and I don't know if they still do it. But you used to be able to go and, you know, somebody would prepare a sit down dinner, one table. And, you know, they'd get twenty people and you would eat together. And it was a very cool thing, very community oriented and everything. And I think that what it comes down to is do you have to drive there or can you get there? You know, isn't that what sort of defines what's appropriate is like, you're not really attracting people from far and wide.
Yeah, I think.
But it's, it's a pretty neighborhood based thing, but you probably still need some parking.
Right, I think it's less that, um, people would have to walk there and, and or was, would be physically able to walk there, but, and more that you it wouldn't necessarily be attracting people from other areas. Um, so we tossed around whether a small medical office or a small dentist office would be included in this, in this use. And first of all, we'd landed on, it would be probably hard to operate a, a medical office or dentist's office in this kind of footprint. Um, but secondarily, it's, we kind of landed on people don't necessarily choose their doctor based on their location. So you wouldn't necessarily say, I'm gonna choose the doctor that's three blocks away instead of the one that's twenty blocks away, just because they're closer. But you might choose to go to that deli, that coffee shop, that yoga studio, that hair salon, because it's closer by, that childcare center, because it's closer to your home. So it's sort of, that was something we were thinking about is things that you would choose to patronize because they're the closest thing to your home and maybe you can walk or bike or whatever it is, where things that are more likely to pull from across the city or across the region, um, wouldn't fit this, this definition.
At the same time, I mean, there can, I mean, in Burlington and many places, you will have conversions of entire streets to commercial use, residences to commercial use, just because they can. Um, and because places in, places in city center don't allow for purchasing your own building. You know, a lot of businesses want to have their own building.
Dorset Street has a whole bunch of them.
Right.
All those little.
Exactly.
Lawyer and Realtors, those used to be single family homes.
Right, and Mary Street. I mean, Mary Street seems, unless they tear them all down.
Nation.
Which they might, you know.
Dermatology building is residential above.
Right.
Right.
So it already exists on, on major streets because they, they are zone commercial. So the question is, do those, what does that, what does that do to a residential neighborhood? It could make it more vibrant, but it also could, you know, bring in a lot of traffic that.
And that was the, that was the flip side of the corners, um, question is not just as a location, but also kind of a limiter on the number of available sites. Um, cause if you said anywhere on the block, you could have your situation, you're saying everybody converted on a block, which may not be a bad thing. Um, but it would be, it could be, it's a potential consequence. Um, where if you said only at the intersections with arterials and collectors, the number of sites that are available would go down. Um, so it would only be kind of one deli or florist or whatever per block or so, or two or three, um, but not kind of a full strip redeveloping because they were able to. I will say generally in this market, my understanding is that residential spaces are more valuable than commercial ones. I don't think that's true, like, I don't think it's necessarily true across the board, but that's the sort of general understanding that I have.
Okay. Um, Paul?
I have the same concern about building into the older neighborhoods, um, as I had with, uh, residential development. Primarily when you look at opening things up to Dunkin' Donuts or Maple Fields or, you know, I mean, all of that, you know, we have to be careful about that, I think. But, ah, I mean, the cat is kind of out of the bag on this because of all of the, um, people working at home, you know, the consultants, there's, you know, the largest workforce in Vermont right now are people that are consultants, are, you know, are, um, loan eagles, I guess they're called. So, uh, you know, that kind of is already happening in homes. And I think we, you know, obviously we want to encourage that kind of thing to happen to as much as possible eliminate, uh, transportation, you know, so that people are telecommuting and, you know, working at home. So, uh, and that's already happening on a really large scale. So our neighborhoods are full of businesses that we don't really know about at all, you know, so. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Paulie, would somebody have questions for you?
Did we have questions for Paul? I think we answered them.
Yeah, so will you draft then the language for the, for the performance standards or adopt them from another section of the L D Rs?
Um, they would probably be based in another section of the L D Rs, but maybe sort of dialed down on things like, like lighting and, and, and maybe, maybe less, less lighting allowed, more screening required. Like there's some tweaks, but we'd start on the framework. My assumption is that we would start on the framework of what we have elsewhere.
Sort of depends on where, where parking is located and where car lights would be disturbing or not.
Yeah, or like where do you, like maybe you need a little bit more screening, uh, for you, from your dumpster site than you would have if you're next to another commercial space. Or maybe, you know, you can't have your trucks come in at three AM or, or something. You know, there's, there's things like that that can be, can be built.
Okay. Um, so I guess just.
Sorry, something that Kelsey said, and I was gonna bring up, she talked about zone one and then she talked about M S R B C D W A F. And they're both, they're both used in this document, at least in your memo, and it was a bit confusing, so.
So the one was the sort of whole, the placeholder and it, they, it may still be in here from when we, when I wrote this memo and then Paul reviewed it and then I reviewed it again. Um, the working title of this lower scale residential, primarily residential area is low scale neighborhood, L S N.
S N, yep.
Yep, acknowledging that it is intentionally residential, but not necessarily entirely residential. Calling it neighborhood instead of residential.
One is L S N.
One equals L S N, two equals M S N. Medium scale neighborhood.
It's on the next page. Okay, then, um, so I guess we should do a straw poll and the idea with the straw poll is that we would be generally in favor of seeing language so that this neighborhood scale commercial use would be allowed in the low scale and medium scale neighborhood districts. With some tweaks to the allowed uses for just ones that kind of enhance community and, uh, maybe dial back things like lighting and big things. Um, it looks like we have some, so I guess maybe before we do a straw poll, we should see if we have, um, audience items. Uh, Ryan? Ryan?
Sometimes there are other things that can, can you hear me, Mike?
Yeah, is it on?
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes there are other things that can affect the feel of the neighborhood. Kelsey alluded to one of them, which is operating hours. A good example in Burlington is the Champlain Club, where it's now called North Star. They have classes there and dances and things like that, but it's on a little dead-end street called Crowley. And so there's always this contention into its open hours and the effect that parking has on that neighborhood. Granted, that's a, you know, exempted use, but again, if you think about like yoga classes, stuff like that, limited size hours, those kinds of things can be really important and impactful. The other thing is, in St. Albans, there is a place called Bob's Meat Market, which is a mid-block deli. And the neighborhood absolutely loves it. It's nothing that would be allowed in the current zoning. But one of the, the, I'd probably say the only drawback really is that the delivery trucks for Bob's Meat Market are peculiarly large for the size of the store. I don't know if that's something that the store has any control over, but I do think that if we are getting into neighborhoods. I mean, on a separate issue, I'd like to see trucks disallowed in both a legal and design way, but I would like to see something that limits the kind of truck access to businesses, that they can open their business provided they can operate it without bringing a semi-truck or truck over a certain weight onto the road because of both the damage and the hazard and noise.
Okay.
I mean, you're always going to have moving, moving vehicles. They're gonna.
Moving van, you mean?
Moving van, yeah, things like that, but, yeah, on a regular basis, I think, makes sense too.
Okay, so I think the straw poll was already including kind of a limited set of uses, so maybe that's good feedback for when we look at the revised list of uses. So I guess on favor of what I described before, these neighborhood scale commercial uses. Hi. Hi. We have more than half of us voting yes, so, okay, that was all of us. So yes, we are in favor of seeing some more detailed language.
Thank you.
Okay, so this next page is where Kelsey kind of lays out the, the names of these districts. Like she was just talking about, if you want to reference that again, just in case you hadn't seen that.
Yeah, it's for both, it's for both kind of a new draft name versus the old numbered draft name that I had been working on and also being clear what existing districts are included in each. This also reflects the discussion from last meeting, meeting of moving Allen Road and Swift from medium to higher scale.
So, and I just also want to point out that C1 Auto, C1 LR and C2 are going to remain additional districts. So there are some additional districts that aren't listed in the bullet points, just to be, make sure people aren't missing them.
Yep, those would be additional districts that would remain separate for use purposes, but they would have the same residential standards, dimensional standards as the high, higher-scale mixed-use district. Which I have not come up with a better name for yet. There's also a handful of commercial industrial districts that are not listed here. IO, Mixed IC, et cetera, because they're not being altered at this point.
Couldn't shrink those three to one?
No, there's actually some pretty distinct use differences between those three.
But we do have, we do have one recommendation, which is to consolidate our two airport districts.
Right.
One.
Yeah, what do you think about that?
We didn't quite get there, Michael, but we got from five to four.
Okay, any, any big drawbacks on the airport districts? I know it says there's not a lot of functional district difference, but do you have seen any drawbacks?
There's not a lot of functional difference, the, the district, the line between the two is also kind of unpredictable and somewhat arbitrary. It limits what the airport can do in certain locations in a way that doesn't make a lot of sense. Like their maintenance facility being in one, one location instead of in another location. But the terminal being able to do something, you know, it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have those things different. There is still a separate, there would still be a separate C1 Air District. So that's sort of the next like layer out. So this is really just the airport property that is now divided into two districts and making that just one.
What is C1 Air? Where would that be?
C1 Air is essentially at the corner of Kennedy Drive and Williston Road. And it's essentially a commercial district, but it allows for certain aviation-related operations, which is shades of very minor difference that frankly, they're just offices. But I think it might also allow for airport parking, which is the, the only district that allows that. So the, I think there's a car wash and there's maybe a, maybe they allow car rentals, this may be the other thing. So I think the Rifty might be there, so those are the handful of things that are allowed there. The district. This is the boundary line between the districts here, the little airplanes and the stripes. So as Kelsey was highlighting, it sort of goes right through the middle of the airfield. I think broadly speaking, this is where the terminal here is. So the, I, I think that the idea was, this is sort of, originally, this is the airport terminal itself. The striped part is places like Heritage, but also the maintenance garage, which is integral to the airport. And it's some, but not all of the military side, which is exempt from anything local in terms of regulations anyway, so.
On the, on the bottom is, isn't that where the commercial transportation is like FedEx and so on, they've done.
Right, so, so the airport owns land, and I can bring this up on a different map, I should have brought this up in an interactive map. But the airport owns a lot of this purple as well. The, 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 the white striped and the one at the airplane is, is what is typically considered to be quote-unquote inside the fence, inside the secure part of the airport. A lot of what you see in the purple here are the businesses in su- support of the airport. Most recently Beta, but many others that are aviation-related are owned by the airport, leased by them. Not every single business is an airport-related one. Like the Porthouse, for example. But, but many are. That would be untouched by this change.
Is the freight terminal in the vertical striped or in the purple? The freight terminal?
I believe the freight terminal would be in the vertical stripe because that's inside secure area.
How would these changes affect the, where 200 houses used to be and it's now sort of park-like?
No change whatsoever.
So it wouldn't allow the, the airport to build stuff there or make.
No, this doesn't change any of what is or isn't allowed to be part of the airport. It's literally just consolidating the two districts that are within the secure area of the airport into a single district.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The area that you're talking about is still.
Really important point though, because we want to make sure that.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood knows there is no changing of boundaries other than eliminating a fictitious line halfway through the airport.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions?
Yeah. How many districts then, how many zoning districts will we have?
Seven hundred and sixteen we'll be down to, I think.
Wait a minute, we started at fifty.
We're going the wrong way. I'm actually not sure, we haven't counted the whole list at the moment.
And also.
Sixteen, maybe less, no. It depends if you count the overlay districts and things. Yeah, so like.
District, even though it may be the same as another district, is a different district if it's in a different part of the city.
No, districts can be, could be discontinuous, so the, our residential four district today is East Woods, it's Country Club Estates, it's Mayfair Park. But by consolidating the ones, the twos, the threes, Kelsey's going to give you a number here in a second of how many fewer we'll have.
Is this them now?
This is today's, yeah.
Does this affect your vote on the airport? Because we could.
I think there will be eleven on this list, but this is missing a few.
I don't think so.
Where's Mixed IC? Are you, is there more to the left?
This is all.
That would be twenty-six there.
I think it's eleven.
Plus industrial.
Where are the industrial?
Where's the industrial district?
There's two, we're going to be keeping. So it's, it's eleven, I think.
I think that's, I think we're keeping eleven from this list, but this list doesn't show industrial open space or.
Oh, there they are, haha.
Ah, okay, eleven.
Just kidding.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Fifteen, sixteen.
Sixty.
There will be six.
As opposed.
There will be sixteen instead of thirty-three.
Six residential.
And Allen and Swift will join something else, right?
Allen Road and Swift Street would be joining C1 R12, C1 R15. I think that's it, because the others are being kept out.
They're, they're becoming what we're now going to call the higher-scale mixed-use district.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was a discussion we just had recently, we were not quite sure about Allen Road and Swift Street. And then we looked at the mapping and we're like, you know, I think it makes sense to be in the high versus the, the medium. So that was a discussion.
Okay, because there's businesses as well as pretty dense housing.
Yeah.
Along with some large.
Yeah.
Private homes as well on big plots, but.
Well, and the commission actually looked at where those lines fall, they don't go as far up the hill towards Spear Street as I think we all thought, like the Swift ends at about Feral Park. The Swift District ends at about Feral Park and the Allen Road District ends a sort of a similar longitude.
Birch or whatever?
Yeah, more or less.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, how are we feeling about the straw poll on the two airport, combining the two airport districts? Be ready for, okay, so who's in favor of combining the two airport districts?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, that look and opposed? Paul, were you opposed? Oh, okay, good, so unanimous. I do have a personal request that we try to keep that little airplane symbol.
Deal.
Okay, good. I already voted, but that's extra request. Michael?
What's listed here.
You just turned it up.
What's listed here as mixed industrial and commercial, that's, that's part that's south of the airport.
Yes.
Going to change the name.
So, so the, the area that is mixed industrial-commercial includes the area just south of the airport. Essentially both sides of Williston Road, east of Kennedy Drive. It includes today Technology Park. It includes the Ethan Allen Industrial Park behind the airport. And it includes Burrard Drive behind the airport, so there's, it's, it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. Our recommendation was to tackle the question of that district and the industrial open space district. When you, in the not-too-distant future, when you look at where do you want to consider ancillary uses like overnight accommodations in those areas, that that's the right time to tackle that, that it's in our view, it was one step sort of further away from Act forty-seven and the priority of getting this work done, but that's entirely up to you.
Okay, next section is about parking. So there are some changes that were required by the legislation.
There are some changes that were required by the legislation that are very minor to what we have in last year's legislation, which is that multifamily housing, I think we require one point two units or one point two-five parking spaces. Under this new state law, it is one parking space, so we have to make little tiny tweaks. We're also anticipating that this year's legislature will make some additional changes to parking. Which include, there are some, it's sort of interesting that the, that this is a priority at the state level, but will include requiring the two parking spaces that are back-to-back like this be considered two parking spaces. We are silent on the subject, but we can certainly say that they are two parking spaces.
You mean like on a driveway?
Right, they, they call it tandem parking in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
So that's one of them. A second one would be to require that a parking space be not larger than nine by sixteen, nine by eighteen feet. So municipality could not require it to be bigger than that. That's basically our exact standard. The one thing that is a little bit tricky is that we have standards that say what happens if you do angled parking and angled parking is typically sort of a slightly different dimension. But we, we put in the simplified state rule that just says nine by eighteen. There was a prior version of the legislation that had talked about limiting it to something like eight by sixteen. And there was a lot of testimony provided to the legislature that that is smaller than an F-150, which is the most popular vehicle in the state. So to say that it's, yeah, that would be leading a lot of people to opening their doors and having insurance companies do quite well out of it. So that's the second one. The third one would, what's the, what was the third component under the state legislation about it? Oh, that off-site parking must be allowed if the applicant wants to do it and the neighbor wants to do it. So we're silent on that, we've allowed it for some time, but the legislation would say that if a owner of a, of a building has an agreement with the adjacent building, that that is or property, that that is, that can count towards their one parking space minimum. So we've incorporated all that. We did have one thought that we wanted to share with you. It used to be when you had parking minimums, that the DRB had the authority to reduce that parking minimum by, to twenty-five percent. When you eliminated all of the parking minimums except multifamily, you also eliminated the waiver authority. We were wondering whether you might want to instate some allowance for the DRB to grant fewer parking spaces if the circumstances are appropriate to it. So let's say it was transitional housing for folks who are unhoused. Or we have a circumstance right now where the University of Vermont is in front of the DRB for an application for new housing and they said, our students don't have, we, we don't allow them to have cars. So things like that, could the, would the planning commission be comfortable in, in, in taking a look at some language of what, what would an authority look like to allow less than the one?
Question.
Yeah.
S-one-hundred for multifamily requires a minimum of one?
It does not, it prohibits a municipality from requiring more than one. It does not require us to set a minimum of one, it just says we can't set a minimum of two or three.
It's similar to the density thing where it's, you don't have to say five units an acre, you just have, you can't be worse than that.
Probably less than one.
Yep.
Were they, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Paul.
I was just curious about the, a parking spot on your lawn. I mean, that was a big issue before the council at one point, that people didn't like the fact that people would have a driveway, but then they had more than one or two cars, so then they would park on their grass and really turn it into a parking lot, so it looked pretty crummy. Was, I can't remember what we resolved that as a council. And if the state and, and S-one-hundred and so forth with housing had any conversation about that.
Not really, the state has not had any discussion about it that I'm aware of. I think that the, the question that, that I, as I recall, came up to council was let's, the, a property has a driveway and has their one or two or three or four parking spaces. What happens if somebody is choosing to park? one or two or three or four parking spaces. What happens if somebody is choosing to park a car on an area that is not designated as a parking area and it, it's sort of, it's a, it's a it, it's not something that is necessarily about zoning because um, it, it's, but it, but it's close to zoning. And so is it an ordinance? Is it is it an area? Um, and the city has not taken a formal position on what happens if somebody parks a car on grass?
Uh, I, I seem to remember that discussion. Among them was what happens if my driveway is, my, is my car is there and a visitor comes with a mobile home? And he wants to, you know, he can park on my, he can park on my grass.
Right, the, the area that we have authority.
It wasn't resolved.
Right, the area that we do have authority over is if it is, if it becomes essentially a parking space in the sense of it, it, it is clearly um, you know, been paved or it's so trampled down that it is just dirt and is clearly a parking area, then that would likely be considered impervious area and then it counts towards your maximum lot coverage. Um, but there's a lot of shades of gray in between, you know, a car being placed on grass twice a year versus every single day and what is, what does it do? But, yeah.
It gets pretty tricky. Okay, I just was curious if they had thought about that and had any requirements for us.
So the two questions for the commission are, one, um, are you comfortable with us uh, assuming what's happening in this legislature about the tandem parking and the minimum parking size of just going ahead and writing that? Um, uh, into the draft regulations and two, um, what are your thoughts on seeing language for a um, potential uh, authority for the DRB to reduce that minimum parking under certain limited circumstances for multifamily housing?
I'm okay with them reducing. I don't want them enlarging.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion out there? Okay, um, all in favor? Alright, okay, we got a good straw poll unanimous. We can put that in. Um, let's see, next items. Um, there were no questions about adapting the conservation P U D.
Well, it's more that.
You didn't have any outstanding new items.
There's not outstanding new items and, and there's a little bit of structural work, but that falls into the Article fifteen stuff that I said is probably best discussed as a big chunk and that big chunk can go next week.
Okay.
I had a comment uh, on the sentence which begins first for lots covered with seventy percent or more. You've only got habitat blocks and or hazards, I think it because further down you talk, we talk about N R P, level, level one hazards, habitat blocks, inhabitant connectors, I think.
There's two different things. There's some, the first is for habitat blocks and hazards and the second is the process for um, areas that were subject to conservation P U Ds. Those were not um, the same set of lots. Those are two different processes.
And then my question is whether, whether you could give us a little more explanation of the second for lots subject to conservation P U Ds. Um.
I think, I, this is where, yeah, I think this is where um, at one of the last meetings staff had given us some, it was like a map with some blobs on it that were kind of examples of the spots where these were happening and they were kind of giving us examples of how they would make the N R P bigger to encompass like the approximately seventy percent and make the approximately thirty percent where it made most sense to have the development kind of go into the adjoining um, zoning district.
Right, and then, and then some other cases, if the property happens to be surrounded uh, in its entirety by areas served by water and sewer and there are not hazards or habitat blocks on the property, then that under S one hundred really ought to be an area where it's, it's more than the thirty percent can be buildable. Um, and that's what we had, that's what we had talked about and we, um, that's all part of the mapping that I said we're building that widget, uh, that, that that web map to show all those examples.
So.
So I think we'll see the map, the final map.
Yeah, I just had a couple of what-ifs. So I have a parcel that's eighty-five percent N R P, level one hazards, habitat blocks, connectors. Um, which leaves fifteen percent to, to be developed unless we then, groups then come in and pre-designate where the thirty percent is.
Yes.
Uh. Yeah, if it's, if it's eighty-five percent N R P, then the only buildable portion is the fifteen percent.
I think, I covered all those N R P or level one resources or hazards, habitat blocks, habitat connectors.
Yeah, if there, if there is thirty percent of the lot that is not currently in the N R P, we would be moving the line to make it so thirty percent is developable. Would reduce, reduce the, the size of the habitat block.
We would encroach upon those other resources.
Yes.
Because they were already enabled to do so, the difference being that we're drawing where instead of having it be up to the applicant to decide where. So it's trying to maintain the same policy.
It maintains the same policy. It's just the city drawing the line instead of the applicant, which then provides better protection for the remaining habitat block um, than if we had kept it all in water and sewer served area, which is what you would have to do um, to allow the developer to choose the location. Cause otherwise, and under state rules, you may have, someone may have the argument that you could develop the whole thing at a certain density because it's served by water and sewer. So by us drawing the line instead of having the developer draw the line, you can make that very clear that this is the development area and that is not. And that would be outside of the water and sewer area.
Choose the least.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it, the, the, the least sensitive and also um, the most logical to be contiguous with other development areas or streets or um, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be like a sort of squiggly snake through a property because it's running between some stuff. It may be the front corner or something, so there may be a little bit of encroachment on a sensitive area in order to consolidate and in, um, the development and reduce the total impervious that you would need for some long skinny road.
But attempting to consolidate may not be the least uh, sensitive. You might have to, we talked about it at the last meeting, might have to have this thirty percent made up of two or three.
It great, it could, you could have a shape of a lot where you could have this corner and that corner.
Sensitive areas.
Yes, but I would say we would likely not recommend that you have a road going all the way to the back of a property to access a development site at the back of a large property because of the impact of the road going all the way across.
So then there's the converse of that, which is I, I have only ten percent um, on my lot. Um, that is uh, protected resources. And so I can develop ninety percent.
Yes. If it's in the water and sewer service area, yes.
Well.
Well, that's a big loss of conserved land.
That's.
No, are you, is it one of the spots where you would have had to have the conservation P U D?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's the second part, that's um.
I'm, I'm on part two.
Yeah, you're on part two now. So in the areas where it currently needs to be a conservation P U D, that's where, when we looked at the mapping, um, we were actually expanding the N R P to cover that seventy percent.
Right.
It, well, and just to be clear, in some cases.
You've abandoned the seventy percent. There's nothing, there's no seventy percent anymore.
Correct. So what it was, what it's more likely is if you have a, you say you have a parcel that's rectangular and you have ten, fifteen percent on the back, that's truly wetlands or floodplain or steep slopes or whatever hazard, habitat block, something else there, but the property itself was in a zone and of a size that required a conservation P U D. It's this, it's a very similar, do we draw the line or do they draw the line exercise? Where we would draw the line forward and expand the N R P from where it currently existed.
So the, the, the pre-d, the pre-designation.
Say it again, in some cases.
It's the same.
All my problems.
It's the same present, pre-designation and Paul, Paul's right, in some cases, there are a few properties that um, in the kind of rough sieve of the sort of zoning districts and lot size of previous conservation P U D um, requirements. There are a few properties that got caught up in that that are otherwise surrounded by development, otherwise served by a park, um, don't make a lot of sense. They're on, you know, um, um, an arterial road, whatever, that we would be just taking out of the conservation P U D program.
Yeah, no, my concerns have been.
Were you guys talking about this?
Uh-uh. I left. I think I wasn't feeling.
Oh, I think maybe you missed it. So yes, I think based on your questions and the mapping exercises we looked at before, I think your fears are allayed.
Thank you.
So, so just to summarize that, um.
I just didn't wanna lose any conserved land.
Well.
Or friends.
So I would say that the objective was not necessarily in this case to have the seventy percent side to be matched every single time. It was to use a, uh, a more precision tool to the individual site. So for example, I'm gonna just to sort of recap your prior conversation, you looked at Dorset Heights here. Um, the division between the existing natural resource protection district, which is what would still need to be conserved and um, the developable area follows right at the back of the homes. Um, and so if you were to try to increase the seventy percent to the seventy percent, you'd have to put all of the existing homes into a conservation district, which puts the existing house into a strange place. So that's an example of it's fifty percent instead of seventy percent.
Yeah. Think that's a great example.
And we can go through all of these when we show all the mapping together.
Nice match.
Okay, so moving on to inclusionary zoning and T D Rs.
Yeah. Um, so a lot of this was discussed previously um, in concept. This is the first time you're seeing some of the language stuff. The question we have highlighted in red is that the, the value of a T D R had been discussed conceptually at a previous um, meeting and sort of how it could be used and what does it look like and when it's used. Um, so this question is actually about the number. Um, is, is two thousand an appropriate number? Or does new commissioners have other thoughts about the value of a T D R? And I included one example of, of what that kind of looks like on the ground in a development scenario. How many T D Rs you would need to do certain things on a cer, on a very specific type of lot and building.
I, I just have a real basic question. Do we still need a T D R program? I mean, it seems to me that there's a lot of ways to really beef up the density.
So I um, have a personal opinion and I have a professional opinion.
Okay, yeah. Well, I'm stressing it personal, but I like the professional.
Yeah, my professional opinion is that when the T D R program was established, um, hmm, it was established for two reasons. It was both for increasing density in certain areas and decreasing and conserving in other areas. So it's the two sides of that coin. Um, I think since the time that the, the T D R program was established, both of those sides have been beefed up. So the allowances and how you do development in the areas where we want development has been beefed up quite a bit. Um, conservation and the method and like bringing in habitat blocks and all these other things, expanding the wetland buffer. A lot of that has been beefed up as well. So I think both of those things are at better places than they were when the T D R program was established. Um, that said, there are landowners that own T D Rs at the moment or own large pieces of land. Um, that have some level of expectation of the value of T D Rs. Um, that the discussion I think has been if you don't have, if, because of city regulatory steps that have been taken, you don't have development potential on your, on your land that you should have some value from it. Where the commission landed, and this was Jessica's um topic, and she can explain it if I'm not saying it correctly, a few meetings ago was there's some amount of land that if you have development potential on a certain number of acres or a certain number of units or whatever it might be, then you don't get the T D Rs anymore for the rest of it. So it's not, you don't have a have your cake and eat it too situation. So what we're talking about now is changing the T D R program and also contracting how many T D Rs are still available. Um, so I guess I would say this is another intermediate step towards the T D R program going away in the next five to ten years, um, and not having it at all anymore. Um, it could be sooner, it could be later, but that would be sort of my rough estimate. Um, so.
So professionally, you think people will actually buy these for different projects? I, I'm just trying to decide, who in the world would spend another two thousand dollars or whatever they're we're talking about, if you can get another.
Right.
Um, throw in a couple more um, affordable units and you get a whole nother, um,
I think it's a, I think it's a tough one, cause it's, I am not, well, I'm not an expert in, in construction financing and I don't know if you know, spending twelve or fifteen thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars or whatever the market rate is for a T D R is worth these things, um, and how it would go, but that's where we're talking about tweaking the value of T D Rs, because if part of the purpose is still to have that land elsewhere conserved, you want the T D Rs used. Um, but we also have a lot of function that has, is protecting land elsewhere otherwise. So that is, that is absolutely an open question about the utility of the T R program and the market for the, for T D Rs um, in South Burlington, giving our other development potential. Um, but this is, it, it feels like this is kind of a baby step in that direction. And if you wanted to take the full leap, you could. If you wanna take no leap, you can you know, take smaller steps or bigger steps or, or something in between.
My little.
Paul had, and Donna both.
I'd go for the full leap myself. Um, the T D R thing has been around for years and years and years, decades. And every decade or so, we discuss it and it sounds like proposing that we look at it for another five or ten years. It's just another five or ten years. It, you know, nobody buys them. That's the problem, you know? And there's less incentive to buy them, as you mentioned, than ever before, you know? So, um, I know, I know Michael loves the T D Rs, you know, but uh, you know, it, I it just doesn't happen. And I totally understand and respect the problem of having people who, you know, have based their family inheritance and their retirement and everything else upon having a T D R, you know, it's, it's tough, but well, I'd say bite the bullet at some point and relieve us of this entire mess, really. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, basically I was gonna, I agree with what you just said and I, I wondered it, can we just cut off creating anymore? You know, cause how many?
They're, so it's, it's a.
People that have an expectation of them. Don't they already, haven't they already created them?
It's not a, um, it's not necessarily creating them. It's in the regulations, you have a right to sever a certain amount of development right based on when you sever it. So there's actually, um, there are about four hundred that are currently severed from property but haven't been applied. They haven't been received anywhere, so they're just floating around as, as legal rights um, that people own on paper.
You have to kind of continue to, to honor those, right? As long as somebody's willing to buy them, you know, obviously if there's no, if there's no market for it.
I mean, it's a, it's a city-created tool. Um, people have entered into financial um, transactions based on them having some value. Um, I think it's a slightly different question when it's, you know, I own thirty acres of land and I'm expecting it to be an, you know, X number of T D Rs, whether that's two or forty-two. You know, if you haven't severed it, you don't necessarily know that number um, with precision and that can always be changed, which is what, partially what we're talking about is changing that number. Um, that maybe you're closer to two than forty-two. Um, yeah, so it's, it's a bit of a, it's a, it's a expectation-based question, like people expecting to be able to do this in the future, but as, as Paul said, it's been um, almost twenty years that these have been available to sell. Um, there have been some transfers, but there haven't been a huge number, is my understanding. Um, but part of that is like, how much are they valued? And so it's, it, there's a lot of economics involved that um, whether it's worth the city, whether the city wants to balance those economics and the value to property owner, property owners versus the likelihood that someone will develop using them um, versus the regulatory space and capacity and development review energy and everything else that it takes to use them.
Isn't this a legal question? Why don't we just ask the, you know, legal team, like, how do we get rid of these as quickly as possible?
Sort of.
Just ask that? Can we make that question?
Yes, there's not a straight answer.
We don't know. Um, sure.
Tim Barrett Royal Drive, uh, Michael and I were on the TDR Subcommittee or Task Force, right? And so when you, when you say severed, that means they have been surveyed and the deed has been filed?
That the land has been conserved, that they've been lived in.
Who owns the four hundred?
Vermont Land Trust.
Well, hey, most of
The city owns some as well.
Yes, but those have not been severed. You you asked about the ones that have been severed. Most of them are owned by the Vermont Land Trust, resulting from, and this is where it adds some complexity to it, resulting from purchases that involve the city as a participant, as an investor too. And so it's sort of part of a larger arrangement, but sorry, that cut you off.
That's right. This is all good history. My point was that we we had that task force during interim zoning. Right? That was part of the work that had to be done to come up with some better plan. And um, my fear is that you're you're talking about perhaps either diminishing or removing the program entirely, right? I worry, and and that was a really excellent comment to ask uh, the city council, I mean, legal counsel for an opinion on that. If you were a landowner and you had land and you had an expectation ten, fifteen years ago, when the program, twenty years when it was started, I mean, if you didn't take any action or you didn't sell it over years, just the growth in the city alone eventually would crowd you out to a point where you might not, there might be less demand for it, right? So my fear is that if you cut the program, that might have a legal implication that we would not want to have to endure. But that's why I would want that opinion from our attorneys, um, or the city's attorneys, not our attorneys. So um, that's all I wanted to say is that I I would, I would be hesitant to go down that road. Because because the value of these things have have varied over time, right? And there could be a point in the future when they have no value at all, for whatever reason. Maybe at that point, you might want to make that decision. But until then, I think you would want to leave a static program and then it let, he leaves it to supply and demand and it's not your problem. You have the rules, the rules were enhanced in order to be, make them more valuable, right? In order for density and other things outside of the southeast quadrant. That was the, that was the key thing, right? I, my, my advice would be to, if you're gonna, not, not to do anything at all, leave the rules as they are and let the program sort of just subside on its own, because that's what development will do. Thank you.
Michael, you were on the TDR Committee also, so you can go.
Thank you. Yeah. I am a little conflicted about this. Paul is right that it's been around for a long time, Paul Angles, that is. I think it's been here, been around since two thousand and six. But it was flawed in two ways in my mind. One, um, receiving areas were restricted to the SEQ as were sending areas, which kind of in some ways defeated the objective of conserving. And the other flaw was that one TDR equaled one residential unit. That was it. And we tried to expand, I mean, the, the, the idea of, or the effort made by the TDR IZ Committee was to expand the market for TDRs because the city has both probably a legal, but certainly a moral obligation not to do away with the TDR value that I have in my land. I have a piece of land. I haven't developed it, but I know that I can get some value out of it by selling TDRs because that's what the city promised. We've now moved on to expand the market outside the SEQ. But in my view, and that was part of the discussion I wanted to have tonight, not enough. We've added building bulk, uh, we've added lot coverage. But we've also, in this memo, restricted where TDRs may be used for that purpose. Large buildings was one of the, one of the restrictions and um, I think we should go in the, in the opposite direction. We should make uh, TDRs usable in receiving areas as, in as, in as many places as possible. I know you, you mentioned at the last meeting or some meeting when we discussed this that a neighborhood wouldn't appreciate additional building bulk in the same way that Paul has mentioned that uh, a quad, a fourplex in his neighborhood would look out of place. But, you know, let, we've got a finite amount of land in South Burlington to build on and going up is probably, looking ahead, one of the only ways we can increase housing, the housing stock and density. So I think we should expand it, not restrict it.
Okay, so I guess just um, Helen, this is something that you may have missed. We um, we had an accounting at our last meeting in May of kind of where we were at. So in twenty twenty-two, we had thirteen hundred. Yeah, and then with the zoning changes that we put in place, we removed any that were associated with hazards. So anything in a wetland, you can no longer sell that land. Blood plane. So we removed those um, most restrictive hazards, wetlands, blood planes. So that reduced it down to eight hundred and forty. These are approximate numbers. And then we just recently talked about um, moving any city lands into a park district. So a city land would no longer have TDRs. So I mean, this is something that, you know, obviously the current council would need to go along with, but that was like a, a you know, basically the city giving up TDRs um, on city lands. And that would get us down to seven hundred and seventy-eight. And then we had a discussion about similar to, when we probably had brought up a map where, you know, there's properties that actually have a significant amount of development potential that they've either used or um, these are properties that are split with part of the property in the NRP. They would have TDRs and part of the property um, that are in like a development district. Those areas are now gonna be automatically zoned by this new state legislation to have five units an acre. So in my opinion, you know, if we, if it's a property that has a reasonable chunk of land that now is gonna have five units an acre development potential, plus all of these bonuses we're talking about, it feels like why would that property then also get to sell TDRs? So we talked about maybe eliminating TDRs from those properties that are still gonna have a chunk of development potential. And that will get us down to closer to six hundred and sixty. So um, kind of through all these steps that we've been taking that are kind of logical, you know, you can't build in a wetland, you can't build a foot plane, you you know, if there's property owners that are already getting kind of value for their property in another location, like those all make a lot of sense to me and feel like they're kind of defendable. But I think I kind of agree with what Tim's saying to just totally eliminate the program feels um, potentially not allowed and disingenuous to landowners.
And there might be some liability.
Yeah, liability. I think we've had enough of that in the city. But so I I do feel like we need to continue to have options. And it sounds like Michael's maybe saying we maybe don't have quite enough and we didn't get to that table yet, but. You know, I just wanted to make sure we're kind of on the same page. We've been reducing um, to kind of get there. And some of that would be part of this package we're putting together.
There's a sentence here that reads, the commission has proposed the TDR program to grant sending TDRs only to lots with little to no development potential. Those lots are not interested. It was the land that had development potential that we wanted to protect back in two thousand and six with this program. Not lands that have no, no development potential because they've got nothing to sell.
So there's a little bit of difference, I think, between what you're saying and what I was saying. There are areas in the NRP that are are not developable to a certain extent now because of the expansion of the NRP, but are otherwise developable because there's not hazards in certain areas. So it's the removal, like moving the T, the NRP out and applying TDRs. It's, it's a sort of a secondary conservation layer on top of the NRP regulation that would take that developable land out of the development potential.
But NRP's don't have TDRs. They only have one or three, depending on the size, allowances for one or three residential units.
I think, I think Halsey's describing the thing I was just talking about where a particular property has both NRP and development potential, because it's a split zone on the one property. Is that, it's, it's strange to talk about, but it, I think that that's the concept that that's referring to.
Yeah, I'm thinking of what was Dorset Meadows. There's no NRP, right? Yeah, along, along Allen Farm Road.
Okay, and can you elaborate, Michael, on your question?
Yeah, keep going.
So that's NRP. They, I can't remember what size it is, but it's big enough to have three, they, they can have three units.
Yes.
But they don't have any TDRs.
They have the ability to sell TDRs, yes, because they're
The extent of those three.
So the TDR, so so let's say there's a property that's thirty acres in size.
Yep.
It, and it's entirely in the NRP. Under today's rules, it has the ability to build up to three homes and the ability to s- uh, sell thirty times one point two, so uh, thirty-six TDRs to somewhere else. Three of those would be used by the house, by the houses if they chose to build them. But then they would have the ability to sell thirty-three elsewhere in the city, assuming that there's no wetlands and things like that. But that, that's the current, right? So that's the current allowance.
So they have TDRs above their actual ability to construct housing units on the lot.
Right.
So one TDR on a in an NRP is, is one point two acres?
No, it's point eight.
It's the inverse of that.
On the sending, it's point eight three, on the receiving is one point two.
Yes.
I would really like to make a comment particularly about that spot, because that property was purchased particularly because they wanted to conserve it, you know?
They wanted what?
They wanted to conserve it. They knew that it was, they knew that it was gonna be conserved. They wanted it conserved. So why on earth should they make more money off of that property when they themselves wanted to conserve it? That makes no sense that they should get TDRs from that. None.
No, I don't think they have it. I, I'm saying they don't have TDR. Uh, well, they might have three TDRs.
Let me, let me back up. Let me back up so that everybody's got the same basic understanding. When the system was set up twenty years ago, what was arranged was we took the entire acreage of the southeast quadrant and put a theoretical density of one point two housing units per acre that was given as an allotment to everybody. In some cases, you could build more than that in the receiving areas um, by buying TDRs. And in some cases, you could only build up to one or three homes on the property and what you were given was the ability to sell your TDRs. So it's sort of a cap and trade program where everybody had one point two units an acre of theoretical density that they might be able to use, or if they were in the NRP, could sell to somebody else as tokens.
Yeah.
Essentially.
But when you buy it, when they, when the property was purchased, makes a big difference as to whether or not, you know, you had an expectation of selling TDRs. And I think in, in certain cases, if the, the property was purchased with the knowledge that it was to be conserved, that, that there's no reason that they should benefit financially from that.
So there, I don't know the specifics of that parcel, but there are situations where the
Controversial.
That, there are situations where the TDR value is part of the conservation easement or other conservation transaction process. So the value of the TDRs may be transferred instead of money. And so like, there are things like that, that it, the TDRs were part of the transaction that made the conservation work out on paper.
I think, I think Donna's talking about a best or bad expectation of what, if they bought a piece of land of this period, what does it exist, what exists as zoning on it? What's tricky in, in these examples that Michael is speaking about is that the city's zoning changed about two years ago to create more NRP in that area, because it was previously a neighborhood district.
Right.
To Donna's point, uh, whatever millions they paid for their thirty acres or whatever the number is, Paul mentioned, said, let's take it as thirty acres. They paid whatever millions for their acreage and they could claw back a little of it by selling the three, if it's more, if it's thirty acres, the three one point two acre three times one point two acres, it's one point six acres, divide that by point eight three, they'll give you the number of TDRs they have. They could claw back some of their millions, but not much. I don't see anything wrong with that.
If it's just for three units?
Well, in an NRP of more than fifteen acres, it's three units.
Yeah, but you see that before it was changed to an NRP district, that property had significantly more value. And so if someone purchased it when it had more value and then it was designated as NRP and it lost a lot of that value, then it makes sense that they would be able to sell the, 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 the TDRs.
I just wanted to clarify that for you.
Yeah, it's just, I think timing has a lot to do with, you know, with the, with the value of the property.
So was my calculation correct?
No, no.
Three times one point two
No.
Divided by point eight three?
No.
The three homes is a right to build on that property. The TDRs is the ability to sell a theoretical density somewhere else, of which, if you choose to build those three, you have to use three of your TDRs to do it. But uh, that's, that's a very minor piece of it. So if you have thirty acres, you have thirty-six TDRs, assuming no wetlands. If you choose to build three homes on it, you're using three of those TDRs, which is your maximum that you could use, and then you'd still be able to sell thirty-three today.
I still didn't understand the calculation, how you get to thirty-six.
Thirty acres of land in the property times one point two units an acre.
But they don't have any development value other than the three lots. The, the, the only development value on this
The only development ability, right? Yes, and that's, that's the heart of the TDR program is that the ability to actually build on the property, you're right, is only three homes. But when it was set up, all land was given a theoretical allowance of one point two units an acre to then sell elsewhere. The idea at the time being, it could have been built with thirty-six homes in, prior to two thousand and six. Instead, they said, we're restricting you down to three homes and you can sell the thirty-three to be built somewhere else to keep you whole as a property owner. That was the intent at the time.
So those three contiguous lots south of Nolan Farm Road, there's about a hundred acres. It's about a hundred and twenty TDRs.
Uh, yes, though some of it is in wetlands.
I'm not sure that the owners would be happy if you took away their TDRs.
Well, I think that's why I said I didn't think we should do that.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, I just raised a question, but I think you've convinced me that we probably should do this slowly.
So I'm, I'm not hearing continuing support for eliminating the program.
Well, you are for me, but and you I was well.
Soon as you can legally do. I don't think that with the changes that are being enacted with these, you know, once these
Donna, can you turn on your mic?
Once these changes are enacted, it, it just doesn't make sense to have TDRs anymore. It's like, so it's a historical thing and I think you have to clear up the ones that are already there. But from this point forward, I think it's just confusing. It, it, it doesn't really get you anything.
Yeah.
Um, and why do we continue to do something that's, that's just so confusing?
Donna, to that point, oh, go ahead.
I remember that I, you know, I spoke to a couple of three or four developers and the one that stuck with me was Joe Larkin, who has that building where the palace was, a new building on the corner of um, Fayette and Shelburne Road. And I asked him if, if you could build another floor by buying T D Rs, would you do it? He said, absolutely. So.
So why did he buy them?
Beg your pardon, he's already, he's built it already.
Wasn't an option at the time. We're only just talking about using, putting, that's what this thing here would do for the very first time.
So um, when I mentioned biting the bullet, that's what we would have to do. The people who, you know, who own the T D Rs would have to be paid. And we would have to buy, bite the bullet and pay them. You know, you cannot leave those people out to dry because they bought into this thing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's the tough part of it. But at some point, somebody, somewhere is gonna have to do that. A day will come, you know?
Well, unless it, it collapses on its own, that the value of those are, are, are gone. So maybe five or ten years, there's nobody out there that wants to put another, whoops, another um, you know, level on their apartment building by buying some T D Rs.
Right, I think there's, so there's two, two sides of the economic equation, very simplistically. There's the price that a developer is, is going to pay for a T D R and there's the value and development potential that you get. So what the city can control is the value and development potential that you get. The city can't control the market for how much someone will pay for it or how much people are willing to sell them for. Um, but that's where this conversation began is the question of how much should a T D R be worth on the receiving end? Um, uh, you know, giving it two thousand square feet is going to likely do, it's going to do something to how many people are willing to sell, how much developers are willing to pay for them, et cetera. Um, if you made it five hundred square feet, it would be, it would do a different thing. If you made it five thousand square feet, it would do a different thing. So that's sort of one of those, as not an economist, and unfairly unknowable things in the current construction finance market.
We, we might be able to do this bit by bit by adding a sunset clause to this regulation. Five years or ten years from now, it's finished. They don't put a bomb under people's chairs who want to sell T D Rs.
I'd be willing to have the, uh, we'd be willing to have the city attorney at least look at that question of could there be some aspect of it sunsetted?
But I mean, the other thing is, is legally you can do things, but also if you made the value of receiving a T D R much higher, then people will, a developer will pay more for it and that means someone holding it on, because it's attached to their land, would be more willing, likely, you know?
To sell it.
Human personalities aside, but they'd be more likely to sell it if you made it a higher number receiving on the T D R end, on the other end.
I think that two thousand square feet, gross floor space, floor area is okay. But if you're looking at lot coverage, I think it's not, it's gotta be more than two thousand square feet.
Yeah, so how, how does that, so is it two thousand for building size and for lot coverage? That's.
As drafted, yes.
Yep. Say that again, it's two thousand square feet.
Of either taking your building and going up.
Okay.
Um, or taking your building and going out.
Going out.
Or out and up, because then it'd be two thousand per floor or lot coverage. Um, which I, I agree would be less valuable, but on the other hand, maybe that's something the city's less excited about just giving lot coverage for more parking instead of for more building.
So, right, Helen, I, I described it as a previ- at a previous meeting as kind of a Lego block. It's two thousand square feet by one story. So you'd need five of them to go up five stories on two thousand square feet.
Right.
But you'd need eleven to go around and make an additional top floor or whatever.
And it's also.
Right, yeah, no, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I could, I can see um, places that if you started allowing a lot taller buildings, for instance, you know, for instance, if it was um, hill, hill property, you know, which is a very developable property. And if somebody bought T D Rs and decided they were gonna put up a twelve-story building there, I guarantee you that most of the people in South Burlington would be extremely unhappy about that.
That's why we put maximum allowable height in this table.
Right, so Donna, I think that's a great segue to what I want to talk about next here, so.
Okay.
Um, you've talked about the possibility of sunsetting the program and various different things. I think I'm, I'm sort of excited by the way that we have sort of shown how this table might work because this table would do a couple of things. One, it would show how, uh, how big a building can be. And I'm gonna speak about the sort of mixed, uh, the mixed use areas along Shelburne Road, for example. That um, it would say you could buy T D Rs but only up to X height, so seven stories. So you get five by right and you could buy two more. The reason that we're excited about that is that that dovetails perfectly with the state requirements for affordable housing, which grants you an additional story regardless, if you're doing X number of housing units. So you could get your five, you get one for your affordable housing bonus as allowed by state law and then you could buy one more, or you, maybe you don't choose to do housing and you just buy two more. It all sort of works in the same set of Lego blocks. And then in terms of sunsetting, if in five, ten years, you've decided that um, the T D Rs have been sold or the program goes away, you can just say, if you choose to, now you can just build seven in five or ten years' time or whatever. It becomes the same building bulk that you're allowing regardless, which is predictability for the community and not having that, oh my gosh, here's a surprise that I wasn't expecting either in a new neighborhood nor existing neighborhood. So that's.
Or in a view corridor.
Or in a view corridor.
That, that's the real sensitivity, you know, in a lot of places. It's gonna be right in a place where, you know, you're gonna be blocking, you're in the mountains and they're not gonna like that.
Ultimately, I think.
But the view corridor has separate rules that would still be in place. Like, we're not gonna get rid of the view corridors.
Correct.
So, so if it's in a view corridor, that's still protected, but with the height.
Well, depends on. Kind of depends on how far away the building is.
Right, that's all built into the scenic view overlay districts, which are not being touched by this pile.
Yeah, I mean, it is to say there could be views that people like that are not currently in a view corridor. But the, the view corridor overlay does take that into account. There's angles and distances and heights and.
Yep.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty neat. It's, I mean, we could add more to it, but it's, it's actually pretty nice the way it is. Um, uh, Paul?
Um, I am unfortunately probably not gonna be able to participate next week and I was really looking forward to all this, as you can imagine. And um, so I wanted to just for a second skip ahead to the conservation P U Ds and following legal review staff will invite the commission to discuss keeping conservation P U Ds or eliminating them in favor of subdivision standards. That's not because I wanna skip to P U Ds, but because when I first came on the commission, you were just beginning the discussion of conservation P U Ds. And at the time, Paul told me, hey, we're getting pretty close to form-based code with conservation P U Ds. So I thought, okay, here we go. So here we are now, um, talking about eliminating them, um, but that's okay. But what I wanna say in terms of like an overview of this, and here it comes again, form-based code. With form-based code, there are no, um, um, there are no T D Rs, there's no inclusionary zoning. And so I ask again that we consider um, looking at using form-based code on a citywide basis. Okay, now we can go back to the discussion at hand.
Okay, okay. Sounds good, um.
But form-based code would make a whole lot of sense for all of this, it really would. I guess so, possibly perhaps that in two thousand and six, when all of the land development regulations mostly about the southeast quadrant are written, as I understand it, um, this is when the T D Rs were established. And when city center was seen as a way of moving development away from uh, from the, from the southeast quadrant, just like T D Rs were seen as a way of conserving land in the southeast quadrant. Neither of these things have worked out very well at all for the city in terms of preserving the southeast quadrant. The, the development has happened in the southeast quadrant. You know, nothing that would take, you know, development away from the southeast quadrant has existed in city center as far as I can see. And uh, same thing with the T D Rs in terms of conserving southeast quadrant.
I'd like to correct you, it's not conserving the southeast quadrant, it's conserving whatever open land was available.
Okay.
Happened to be mostly in the, in the southeast quadrant.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I think just to piggyback on that, I don't, no, I don't think any one of us could say how much land would have been developed in the southeast quadrant without the N R P district in place. I mean, we just have no idea, like, a significantly larger amount might have been developed in that amount of time, those twenty-two years. Um, I like to think that the N R P has prevented certain amount of development from happening in those lands, but it seems like it probably did, because there's not really anything developed there, so.
That's one other thing I wanted to say probably for next week. But um, Emily Krasna has a bill in the legislature right now to um, evaluate the success or failure of uh, Act one hundred and, and whatever, forty-seven, what do they call it anyways? Is it? The Home Act. Okay, so this is a nice idea, you know? Can we evaluate this and see the impact of it and the success or failure of it? That's a unique idea for anybody to do, right? And um, and we could be doing the same, I mean, we could be doing that too. We could be writing that into our land development regulations that the changes that we're proposing in reaction to this legislation be evaluated at specific times in the future. And we might wanna talk to Emily about that because she's really been pushing that in the legislature. What do you think, Gary?
Um, okay, it seems like we might wanna pick up with this table just the next time. Just, I mean, we're talking about seven stories and it's pretty late at night, it feels like a big change, we wanna. Um, so next week on our regular Tuesday meeting, we will pick up with, not the table I'm looking at, the one we just wore, the table nineteen-one and this, this discussion here about the T D R um, selling, so I guess think about it. Um, yes, yeah, we can move on to the minutes. It was March fifteenth, twenty-eighth, maybe?
March twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Well, I would, I was only.
Any, okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we'll make the motion to approve the minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right. You are allowed to vote, Michael.
I am?
Yes, okay, unanimous.
I can't vote.
Oh, yeah, except for Helen who can't vote. But that's still unanimous, right? Oh, yeah. True, Helen, Helen couldn't have voted, well, this was a wonderful meeting, thank you all very much. We are adjourned, very excited to have Helen be able to jump right in. And we will see you next.
Night Duncan, thank you.
Thank you, Duncan.
To say that.
Hang on one second, let me turn off the recording.
Thanks for having me.